Hi, how are you doing?
Hi, how are you doing?
Yes, absolutely. Here's mine. You get one of us, I get both. Yeah, thank you. Do we have a clicker for this or it's just on your computer?
My clicker was an Apple.
Okay, so where do you tap on yours? Just tap the keycard? Okay, yeah, for you second. And then this is the solo. That gives you what's next, alright. Wow, look at you with your fancy. You know what you're doing. I don't. If I could put it together and make it look nice. So, here's.
Good evening, everybody. I do, I do believe that explanation is in order. And this is one of those few times where I have a legitimate explanation for being late. Anybody who knows me, I'm frequently late, running in between meetings. But I had a choice this afternoon, and I believe I made the right choice. I believe, I know I made the right choice. I was asked to go to the Robert Brown High School of Construction and Design and make some opening remarks at their first annual top ten ceremony, which started at three thirty. And I debated whether I would go there or not, because I knew it was going to be very tight to get here. And I'm so glad I made the right decision, because they had people, officials from the district that were supposed to be on the program, and I'm sure they got tied up for some reason like I got tied up, probably coming from one meeting to the next. And I was the only person from the Board of Education or from the district at this meeting of top ten students. And I have absolutely no regrets about being there, I have no regrets about speaking maybe longer than I should have, I'm known for doing that too, because these students needed to hear. I'm sure you guys can appreciate that they are appreciated, they are respected, and that we are encouraging them. And I said to them, "I'm on my way to a meeting where you young people could serve as a wonderful example for the students who are, have some challenges at East High School." So, I apologize for being late, but again, I have no regrets, and we're going to move forward this meeting, and I think our scarrily gentlemen here to my left are going to lead us in this conversation. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. My name is John Burke, I'm a senior buyer with the purchasing department here with the district. I'm here representing on behalf of Gary Smith, Director of Procurement, and the district facilitating this RFP process. I'd like to welcome the representatives from the Rensselaerville Institute, who will be presenting their school turnaround model from the proposal of the RFP that we had put out requesting an EPO. Quickly, let's give you a quick timeline of what has transpired. As we all know, in mid-March, we were directed by the state of New York with several options on how to move forward for a new model for East High School. On Wednesday, the nineteenth, we started to work on RFP. Gary Smith, in cooperation with Ed Lopez, developed the request for proposal for the EPO. We advertised it on March twenty-seventh. On Tuesday, April the eighth, we had a teleconference. We had three potential responders who asked questions, and we responded accordingly. On the Thursday, the fifteenth, the proposals were due, and the only proposal that we had received in a timely fashion was from the school turnaround model. On Friday, the seventeenth, we distributed the proposals to the Board of Education and to subsequent committee members that were assigned by the Board of Education to review the process and read the proposal that was submitted. Last Tuesday, the twenty-second, we convened as a group and developed a series of questions and inquiries that we had, that we wanted follow-up information from, from the school turnaround. On Friday, the twenty-fifth, we disseminated those questions to the representatives and asked for a response as of this Wednesday by noon. In a timely fashion, we did receive the answers to the, I believe, forty-six questions that were presented. And each of the committee members was supplied the questions that were asked and the responses that were provided at that time. As well in that package, the committee members were given references that we had obtained from three of the four references we were giving in the proposal, and those responses were also included, as well as an agenda for today's proceedings. So with that, we'd like to move forward with the agenda. We're going to start with introducing ourselves as district representatives on who we are and who we're representing, and what department or school that we're representing. At that point in time, we're going to turn over to our representatives for the school turnaround model, and they will have forty-five minutes to complete their presentation. At that time, we would ask any of the committee members to hold your questions, take any notes or inquiries you might have. Questions will only be taken from the committee table. At that time, we will then also have forty-five minutes to present any questions we have and give them the opportunity to answer those questions. And at the end of that process, they will be able to give us any summary, and we will then conclude this presentation at that time. So, given that, I would like to defer to my right.
And I am Ed Lopez, the General Counsel. Let me welcome you to Rochester, and I apologize to you for the sparse attendance of committee members right now. I know you came from far away, and I wish there were more members here to listen to your presentation.
I am frankly not worried about that, and you shouldn't either. We all are representative of the bodies that we are going to describe, that we introduce. As you, as been indicated previously, you had forty-six questions. I don't even know if you've ever had this kind of intensive questioning, and a lot of people that were here before put their heart and soul into these questions. So I make no apologies for them not being here today, because they put a lion's share of this effort in. I am Van White, I'm President of the Board of Education and very proud to represent not only these seven members of the Board of Education, but I'm also very proud to represent all the folks that heart and soul went into these questions. So when you, when you talk to us, you are speaking to the community and these folks here. So don't worry about the sparsity, alright? We're here.
Hi, I'm Mary Adams, I'm a member of the school board.
Hi, I'm Karen Buck, I'm a special education teacher at East High School, and also on the school-based planning team, and a senior director.
I'm sorry, Karen, I didn't catch your last name. Thank you.
Jennifer Reese, I'm a program administrator at East High School.
Hi, my name is Rose Nelson, I'm an executive board of the parent professional and teaching assistant, and I represent them today, along with a teaching assistant at East High School.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and for giving us the opportunity to present on the proposal that we submitted to Turnaround East High School. Want to also say, say thank you, the professionalism of the process, but of the individuals who have shepherded the process, in particular Gary Smith's office, they've been wonderful. And, and Mr. Soler, thank you for your support. He made himself available to me and answered every question that I asked of him, so I really appreciate that. We're going to, before we start, just say, we're going to try to keep the presentation a little short, we're getting a little bit of a later start. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I would, one second, I'll do that in a second. We're going to keep the presentation a little, a little short. But before we get rolling, tell you a little bit about who we are. Okay, so three things we want to accomplish today, we want to give you some sense of who we are, our vision for the turnaround of East, and what a partnership with school turnaround would look like. Okay, so my name is John Taylor, I am the Executive Director of School Turnaround. I have been in education now twenty-two years, fifteen years as a school administrator at all levels. I most recently founded an all-boys school in Albany, New York, high school. The demographics of that school looked very much like the East, in that ninety-five percent of my boys were free and produce lunch eligible. Twenty-nine percent of those students came to me having passed the eighth grade reading and EOL assessment. So, so I know the population that we're serving. I got on my way to say though, and I want to kind of, I really want to leave with this, that the mission for Green Tech High School in Albany is that a hundred percent of students will graduate with a reading diploma, prepared for college, and success in the real world. And at the end of the day, that for me was the most important thing that we could do for students at Green Tech, and would suggest that that goal has to be the goal for any turnaround effort at, at East High. I was at Harvard last week for the Closing the Breach Conference, and, and heard a really incredible story from, a story that really described what vision is, from the dean for the School of Education. He told the story, he was about to run in the Boston Marathon, he had done it before, and he said the preparation for running in a Boston Marathon starts with being able to envision finishing. And that if he could not literally see himself crossing that finish line, then he knew that he would not prepare as hard as he needed to to be successful.
I do, I do believe an explanation is in order. And this is one of those few times where I have a legitimate explanation for being late. Anybody who knows me, I'm frequently late, running in between meetings. But I had a choice this afternoon, and I believe I made the right choice. I believe, I know I made the right choice. I was asked to go to the Robert Brown High School of Construction and Design and make some opening remarks at their first annual top ten ceremony, which started at three thirty. And I debated whether I would go there or not, because I knew it was going to be very tight to get here. And I'm so glad I made the right decision, because they had people, officials from the district that were supposed to be on the program, and I'm sure they got tied up for some reason like I got tied up, probably coming from one meeting to the next. And I was the only person from the Board of Education or from the district at this meeting of top ten students. And I, I have absolutely no regrets about being there. I have no regrets about speaking maybe longer than I should have. I'm known for doing that, too. Because these students needed to hear. I'm sure you guys can appreciate that they are appreciated, they are respected, and that we are encouraging them. And I said to them, "I'm on my way to a meeting where you young people could serve as a wonderful example for the students who are, have some challenges at East High School." So, I apologize for being late, but again, I have no regrets, and we're going to move forward this meeting. And I think our scarrily gentlemen here to my left are going to lead us in this conversation. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. My name is John Burke. I'm a senior buyer with the purchasing department here with the district. I'm here representing on behalf of Gary Smith, Director of Procurement, and the district facilitating this RFP process. I'd like to welcome the representatives from the Rensselaer Ville Institute, who will be presenting their school turnaround model from the proposal of the RFP that we had put out requesting an EPO. Quickly, let's give you a quick timeline of what has transpired. As we all know, in mid-March, we were directed by the state of New York with several options on how to move forward for a new model for East High School. On Wednesday, the nineteenth, we started to work on RFP. Gary Smith, in cooperation with Ed Lopez, developed the request for proposal for the EPO. We advertised it on March twenty-seventh. On Tuesday, April the eighth, we had a teleconference. We had three potential responders who asked questions, and we responded accordingly. On the Thursday, the fifteenth, the proposals were due, and the only proposal that we had received in a timely fashion was from the school turnaround model. On Friday, the seventeenth, we distributed the proposals to the Board of Education and to subsequent committee members that were assigned by the Board of Education to review the process and read the proposal that was submitted. Last Tuesday, the twenty-second, we convened as a group and developed a series of questions and inquiries that we had, that we wanted follow-up information from, from the school turnaround. On Friday, the twenty-fifth, we disseminated those questions to the representatives and asked for a response as of this Wednesday by noon. In a timely fashion, we did receive the answers to the, I believe, forty-six questions that were presented. And each of the committee members was supplied the questions that were asked and the responses that were provided at that time. As well in that package, the committee members were given references that we had obtained from three of the four references we were giving in the proposal, and those responses were also included, as well as an agenda for today's proceedings. So with that, we'd like to move forward with the agenda. We're going to start with introducing ourselves as district representatives on who we are and who we're representing, and what department or school that we're representing. At that point in time, we're going to turn over to our representatives for the school turnaround model, and they will have forty-five minutes to complete their presentation. At that time, we would ask any of the committee members to hold your questions, take any notes or inquiries you might have. Questions will only be taken from the committee table. At that time, we will then also have forty-five minutes to present any questions we have and give them the opportunity to answer those questions. And at the end of that process, they will be able to give us any summary, and we will then conclude this presentation at that time. So, given that, I would like to defer to my right.
And I am Ed Lopez, the General Counsel. Let me welcome you to Rochester, and I apologize to you for the sparse attendance of committee members right now. I know you came from far away, and I wish there were more members here to listen to your presentation.
I am frankly not worried about that, and you shouldn't either. We all are representative of the bodies that we are going to describe, that we introduce. As you, as been indicated previously, you had forty-six questions. I don't even know if you've ever had this kind of intensive questioning, and a lot of people that were here before put their heart and soul into these questions. So I make no apologies for them not being here today, because they put a lion's share of this effort in. I am Van White. I'm President of the Board of Education and very proud to represent not only these seven members of the Board of Education, but I'm also very proud to represent all the folks that heart and soul went into these questions. So, when you, when you talk to us, you are speaking to the community and these folks here. So don't worry about the sparsity, right? We're here.
Hi, I'm Mary Adams. I'm a member of the school board.
Hi, I'm Karen Buck. I am a special education teacher at East High School. I'm also on the school-based planning team and a senior faculty member.
I'm sorry, Karen, I didn't catch your last name.
Buck.
Thank you.
Jennifer Reese. I'm a program administrator at East High School.
Hi, my name is Rose Nelson. I'm an executive for the parent professional and teaching assistant, and I represent them today, along with a teaching assistant at East High School.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and for giving us the opportunity to present on the proposal that we submitted to turnaround East High School. Want to also say, say thank you to professionalism of the process, but of the individuals who have shepherded the process, in particular Gary Smith's office, they've been wonderful. And, and Mr. Soler, thank you for your support. He made himself available to me and answered every question that I asked of him, so I really appreciate that. We're going to, before we start, just say, we're going to try to keep the presentation a little short, but we're getting a little bit of a later start. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I would, one second, ready to do that in a second. We're going to keep the presentation a little, a little short. But before we get rolling, tell you a little bit about who we are. Okay, so three things we want to accomplish today. We want to give you some sense of who we are, our vision for the turnaround of East, and what a partnership with school turnaround would look like. Okay, so my name is John Taylor. I am the Executive Director of School Turnaround. I have been in education now twenty-two years, fifteen years as a school administrator at all levels. I most recently founded an all-boys school in Albany, New York, high school. The demographics of that school looked very much like the East, in that ninety-five percent of my boys were free and reduced lunch eligible. Twenty-nine percent of those students came to me having passed the eighth grade reading and EOL assessment. So, so I know the population that we're serving. I, I got on my way to say, though, and I want to kind of, I really want to leave with this, that the mission for Green Tech High School in Albany is that a hundred percent of students will graduate with a reading diploma, prepared for college, and success in the real world. And at the end of the day, that for me was the most important thing that we could do for students at Green Tech, and, and would suggest that that goal has to be the goal for any turnaround effort at, at East High. I, I was at Harvard last week for the Closing the Breach Conference, and, and heard a really incredible story from, a story that really described what vision is, from the dean for the School of Education. He told the story, he was about to run in the Boston Marathon. He had done it before. And he said the preparation for running in a Boston Marathon starts with being able to envision finishing. And that if he could not literally see himself crossing that finish line, then he knew that he would not prepare as hard as he needed to to be successful.
You know, following John Taylor's always a little bit of a tricky, a tricky, a tricky thing for an upstate girl, so I'm going to do my best. I'm Jillian Williams. A little feedback there. I am used to having a cafeteria voice. That's because I was a principal in the South Bronx. I, too, know the demographics and the challenges that come with an urban high school like East. When I started as a principal in the South Bronx, it was a school that was in fact under state takeover as well. Nine percent of kids reading at grade level. It was sixty-four percent by the time we got to four years later. These are the things that are important to us, John and I both. What John didn't tell you is that when his kids graduated last, last spring, with a hundred percent of them with a Regents diploma, a hundred percent of them college acceptance, John sat in the audience with tears streaming down his face. Because he, like you, understands that we ought to start every conversation with making it about the kids. So, I agree, no apologies necessary when it comes to kids. I also want to just say, before I start to talk a little bit about who we are, that we recognize that this is a difficult and challenging process for Rochester. We, look, I, I've sat there and had the slings and arrows thrown at me, and I also know what it's like to take a team and work with that team to make change happen. So I want to tell you a little bit about the Rensselaer Ville Institute and School Turnaround, which I started fourteen years ago. I, by the way, I appreciate it, I don't know if the gentleman who wrote the article that mentioned the, this fact that you've got all this glut of people coming in to kind of take advantage of tricky situations, looking to make money, looking to take over, there is a glut of those now. Fourteen years ago, when we started School Turnaround, it was completely unknown as an approach. In fact, right now, if I were in it for the money, I would just sell the name, because thanks to Arnie Duncan, it's worth a lot of money, this School Turnaround name. I'm not in it for the money, so we're keeping the name. School Turnaround is part of the Rensselaer Ville Institute. The Rensselaer Ville Institute is known as the think tank with muddy boots. We're located in upstate New York, in the Albany area. We've been around for fifty years. Our fifty-year history is about helping people get human gain, not about going out and doing it for them, not about saying, "If you follow these rules, you'll make things happen." It's about helping people figure out what is important to them and helping them achieve that. We do that by finding the folks who we call the human spark plugs, people who make change happen, and by giving them a results framework, saying, "Look, what's the outcome you want to achieve?" Whether it's we want a hundred percent of kids to have a Regents diploma, whether it's we want a hundred percent of kids to have the opportunity at least to go to college, whether it's that we want every teacher to be respected by getting actual course credit for any work that they do towards their own professional development, whatever those outcomes are, that you focus on those outcomes and then figure out how to make them happen. Are you flipping a head on me? Go back.
Okay.
Sometimes I got a beat on John a little bit. He's rushing me. We work in, we work in a number of different areas. We work with other not-for-profits. We work with communities, education, health, government, so we work with a lot of different kinds of organizations. Fourteen years ago, I started School Turnaround as an initiative of the Rensselaer Ville Institute. Here's what we do. We achieve results for young people, no exceptions, no excuses. I don't have a fancy program to sell you. I don't have a silver bullet. I don't have a smoking gun. I don't have any of that stuff. What I have is some experience in turning around a school myself, and I have a team that works with John, who also have that experience and that credibility. We understand at the end of the day that we are not the people who make change happen. That may come as a surprise to you, because a lot of folks come in and say, "If you just get out of the way, we'll make change happen." That's not actually what we do. We believe the people who will make change happen at East are the people who are at East. They're the people that are in Rochester. And right now, what you all probably could use from us, if this goes forward in a partnership, which we'll talk about, is some help on how to make that work. And it always comes down to, you can go ahead. It always comes down to finding those folks who are the spark plugs, partnering them up with these people who have the credibility. Every single person on our staff has turned around a school or a district. Should we take a minute and do another introduction?
Jose Cruz, I'm on school.
Nice to meet you, sir. Jillian Williams, my colleague, John Taylor.
Sorry.
Totally fine. What we want to do is, we want to talk a little bit about, about who these spark plugs are. One of the questions we got, which we appreciated, was, "What's a spark plug?" So a spark plug is somebody who sparks change. I would argue that if we think about it, there is no change that's ever happened in the world that came about because of a program, or a mandate, or a funding stream, or a policy. It always comes down to a person, always. Now that doesn't mean it's the person who's in the formal leadership, it could be anybody. One of the people who had the biggest impact on PS sixty-three in the South Bronx, where I was principal, was, was one of my cafeteria workers. That's a different story, which John's not going to let me tell today, but you catch me later and I'll tell it to you. So, these people who spark change, they're the ones who keep things going in the right What do these people look like? Again, no rocket science here, but it's not the usual things. We don't think you have to have a lot of fancy qualifications to make change happen. We think the single biggest thing is that you got to have energy. You clearly, you went over and shared it at the, at the top ten there. We've seen a lot of that just, you got to have a lot of energy to be able to come up with forty-six questions in response to a proposal that's over fifty pages long with a lot of attachments to it. All of these things take energy. They also take a sense of optimism. There has to be hope that things can be different at East. That's not about placing blame on what's caused failure. It's about assuming that there are things blocking success, which assumes that success is out there, ready for the taking. We just have to figure out how to get those blockers out of the way. People who have energy are able to do that. They've got to have a bias to act. You can't wait around. Kids shouldn't be in first grade, seventh grade, tenth grade more than once. Kids shouldn't leave high school after four or five years without some really clear opportunities that they have agency to choose from. These are all things that need to come about, and they do when you have a spark plug with, with this energy, with a bias to act, with an orientation towards results, with a sense of personal responsibility, and an inclination to teams, and some educational know-how. But I'll tell you what, I, I threw out of my building, when I was a principal, countless consultants. I know it's a little ironic that I'm sitting here saying, "We should come on in and be helpful to you," but I have to say, you know, my security guards got, they, they knew it when these folks came in, and they'd just say, "Sorry, we can't let you in the building." Because I got so sick of people coming in, trying to tell me what to do, just because they had a good idea. Everybody wants to experiment on the school that's got a hundred percent poverty, a hundred percent kids of color, fifteen percent special education, fifty-two percent ELLs. That's where everybody wants to experiment, not in the suburbs. But when you have some turnaround folks, some people who spark change, they say, "No, actually, we don't need you from the outside. We're going to figure this out here." We're good at helping those turnaround spark plugs make those changes happen, because they need some support. The biggest place we can offer support is around how do you get to results? Part of that's defining the results that you want. In education, we have unfortunately become victim to this idea that we keep needing more programs, more activities, more plans. You guys have some good plans here. I don't know that you need a lot more plans. It's all about what are the strategies for getting those plans implemented effectively? And who owns them? Who owns the results? Results have to be owned locally. If I own the results and I take them back to Albany with me, at the end of the day, that doesn't do you any good. We're not the kind of organization that's going to put up a sign out front and say, "Hey, we're here. Look at us." Because you know what happens when you buy somebody like that? When the grant runs out, or the contract's up, they leave and all the change goes with them. So again, part of this strategy is around making sure that that change is local. There are some really basic things that are, that are part of the strategies there: diagnosis, target setting, data use, message and brand, resource alignment, and successful classrooms. Do any of these sound surprising to anybody here? Any of them sound like rocket science? My guess is, at East, you three representatives, you've heard a lot of these, right? Done a bunch of those. And that's not to say you haven't, you know, you don't know anything about them. It's about how do we use these well? I'm going to turn it over to John to talk a little bit about, about the vision for East and how we might form that vision together.
So turnaround at East, one of the things that I noticed while at East was, you've got a lot of programs. And if a kid really wants to do something with their lives, there are, there are programs in place that can steer that kid in a direction to where they can be successful. And so I want to come back to that. But, but at the same time, by show of hands, how many of you know a student at East who potentially, or is, failed in courses or likely will not pass the state tests? By show of hands.
Just one kid. If you can think of one kid, you know that.
Okay. So, what, are there, do you think that if you took every, all these programs, all these wonderful opportunities that are being provided for students at East, and applied them to this one student, do you feel like you could really make a difference in the life, in the life of that student? By show of hands, if you would agree that East has the vehicles in place to do that, to accomplish that?
I think what John's asking is, is if you think of that one kid, don't think of all the kids, think of that one kid that just came to mind. Do you think you could help that one kid get back on track so that that kid did well? That kid passed his or her courses? That kid was able to achieve a Regents diploma? That one kid? Because the point is, if you can help one kid, then we can help all of them. It's not about the inability to help kids do well. It's about how do you figure out how no kid falls through the cracks? That's why our, that's why our motto is, "Everyone achieves, no exceptions, no excuses." Because if you make that the motto, if you make that the message to everyone, it's a way to intervene. By the way, I stole that from Portland, Oregon, so if any of you like it, I stole it from their school board years ago. So if you like it, you can have it, it's all yours. It's a way to intervene, and we see schools do this by saying, "Okay, you know, that kid didn't come because last night he couldn't sleep, because there wasn't any heat in the place where he lives. So, we got to let him off the hook." No, actually, because then we're making an excuse. But how do you intervene then to help that kid? I learned this lesson my first year as a bilingual teacher in Washington Heights, summer of the riots, for anybody who's from Washington Heights or knows it. Had a kid, Rafael, smartest kid in my class, shining star. Day of the state test comes, he won't even fill in a book. Why? Because on his way to school that morning, he'd watched a homicide in the local bodega. How do you combat that? Because I can make an excuse for Rafael and say, "It's all right that he didn't take that test and do well," or I can figure something out. Because our kids depend on that. Your kids depend on that. So, you've got a motto at East.
Academics, arts, and athletic, we got it all. But at the end of the day, what is all? One of the things that we have to ensure that we do for students is that we have the same expectation for every kid in the building. It, you know, access to those quality programs should not be optional. We, you cannot allow students to opt out of pathways that will prepare them for college, that will prepare them for success post-high school. And so you have to, and I stand behind this, I led with the example of Green Tech, that you have to communicate clearly to the entire school community that our expectations for excellence extends to every student. So you can't back off of the idea that a hundred percent of our students are expected to, to excel. We, I saw that in the print media this week, almost saying, "This, this group has the audacity to, to, to expect a hundred percent of students to graduate with a Regents diploma." And, and as an educator, as a school leader, I can't imagine setting an arbitrary number on my expectations for students in my school. And at the end of the day, what parent do you look in the face and say, "Okay, seventy-five percent of students will be expected to graduate with a Regents diploma, but not your kid?" That, would, and a parent raised, "Well, which twenty, who's in the twenty-five percent?" We want to ensure that every kid that is connected to East High is expected to graduate with a Regents diploma and accepted into college. And so that lends itself nicely to our piece about, "Everyone achieves, no exceptions, no excuses." In fact, when we work with school administrators around message, we ensure that in their messaging, they all use "everyone." Everyone achieves. It has to be a part of the message. So let's talk about some of the strategies, things that we need to do at East to turn it around. One, we got to be clear about what the outcomes are for every student. And, and get clear that every student, like the example of the dean of the School of Education at Harvard, every student can envision themselves crossing that finish line, really sees themselves as graduating with a Regents diploma, really sees himself as a college-bound student. We need to commit and align all of our resources to ensure that this happens, and participation cannot be optional. So what needs to change at East to make sure that we live up to this expectation? When we talk about the goal of a hundred percent of students graduating with a Regents diploma, we got to communicate to the entire community what that means. We got to be very clear with parents what their role is in ensuring that that happens. We got to, we got to make sure that students understand that this is the expectation for every last single one of them, when they decide that they want to be at East High. We want to align teaching and learning to make sure that we're preparing students for success on end-of-year courses. We want to ensure that every student has access to high-quality instruction in the classroom, every classroom. We want to ensure that every student gets the support that they need to be successful. And that includes whether a student comes in with a second language being spoken at home, whether they're ESOL or ELL, or special education, it doesn't matter. We have to make sure that students get what they need, that we're providing an equitable education for every student. We want to assess often to confirm that students are learning what's being taught. That can't just be benchmark assessments, that can't just be the end-of-year assessments, that must be short-cycle assessments, that must be daily quizzing and figuring out exit tickets, trying to figure out if what I taught today, did students master that, or students on the road to mastery of that concept before we move forward, or we redesign our lessons to meet the needs of every learner. We need to provide every student access to instructional styles and strategies that work for them. What does it mean to ensure that a hundred percent of our students are accepted to a two- or four-year college or a post-secondary offering of choice? We, we need to get a commitment from every administrator, every teacher, every student, every parent, that they believe, deeply believe in their heart, that their kid, that, that student, that every student in the school, is college-bound, or college material, or post-secondary material, whether that be a vocational school, whether that be the military, whatever they determine they want to do, that they, we believe that they're going to accomplish that goal. We need to provide every student with early exposure and access to college, and that has to start young. Kids need to feel like, "I'm college-bound," by knowing what that means, being able to visualize it means we put them on college campuses in grade seven and start to have conver- and start to have conversations about what that means, what it feels like to be a student. Who's on those campuses? Do any of them look like me? We really need to get that process started early. We need to clearly describe what programs are out there and what's required for entry. We need to expand the CTE options so that all students get to participate in the focus of study prior to graduating. We need to establish a minimum standard for service learning hours for all students so that we can provide every student with real-world experiences prior to graduation. We need to authentically engage students in the decision-making process. We need to engage parents in the decision-making process. We need to align school partners with the targets for academic achievement so that all the programs are talking to each other. They're all pointed at student achievement. We need to change the environment from a punitive to a restorative focus so that students take ownership for their role in keeping East safe. And we need to make East a physically, socially, emotionally and intellectually safe environment for everybody.
So there's, this is about the kids. It should always be about the kids. That's why everything John has talked about there is about that. But I'm going to say one other thing that's not in the PowerPoint. See, here we go. How, how long did I make it, John, before I went off course?
Yeah.
Which is that in a turnaround situation, you, you have to look also at the adults. One of the things I did the very first week that I was a principal, and we do this with principals across the country, is said, let's open the doors and let people come in and tell us what's wrong at this school and where we are failing kids and families. And you will get an outpouring when you do that that is going to be strong. We have generations, as I know you do here as well, of families that have been failed for, for, for multiple generations. Not by East, I mean just across, you know, when you've got entrenched poverty, when you've got entrenched circumstances that make life hard, people feel disenfranchised. And it's important to bring people back in. That's for the community and the kids. It's also important to do that for staff. Staff gets beat up in a turnaround situation. The state has said leaders have to change in schools that turn around. That just is what it is from the state. We can debate that all day long, but it's probably not going to change from the commissioner. We don't envision that all the staff changes at East. We don't envision that because we don't think that the staff, who they are as people, is the problem. We really don't. We are not a CMO. We're not looking to come in, take over and wipe things out. One of the words I hate more than anything starts with A. It's accountability. Now, I might get in a little hot water with that, but I don't know about you. I didn't wake up this morning wanting to be held more accountable. Anybody here wake up that way? You did? You want to be held more accountable? I don't want to be held more accountable. I want, I want to help kids perform. I want to be responsible for performance. And my guess is that both of you gentlemen, that's what you, that's what you mean when you think about being held accountable. You want to be responsible. Being responsible means you get to choose it. Being held accountable means somebody else does it to you. We do that to teachers, we do it to paras, we do it to support staff, we do it to the secretaries, to the bus drivers, to the cafeteria ladies, all day long. Doesn't make anybody get better. The other thing we do is that we monitor them. That's another one I'd like to ban from the vocabulary in education. Because I don't get better because I'm monitored. I get better because I'm helped. That's why our entire plan around professional development and support includes everybody, not just core teaching staff. And that we have a partnership established with Empire State College that that professional development be credit-bearing. Now, whether you need credit or not, it says something that you actually get credit. It says you're putting in the kind of work and investment that's worth something. So while this is an investment in the kids at East first and foremost, and that trumps everything. The same way those 10 kids, I want to know those 10 kids' names and how they got on that list there. You have to tell me afterwards. The same way that that trumps this meeting, the kids at East trump everything else. But it is, it is, we would be remiss if we didn't say that we think helping the adults who help the kids is of primary importance. Why? Because that's what's going to lead to a real partnership and that's what's going to lead to durable and sustainable change. So with that, I want to change, it is killing me to sit down here. John made me sit. I like to stand and walk around. I might do it any second now. What do you all think? And I know we're not allowed to ask the audience. My apologies to all of you out there, but otherwise I'd ask you and get into real hot water, I'm sure. But what do you think a partnership ought to look like? If you get an educational partner, let's step back a bit from us. Let's step back a bit from anything the state has said and just say, if you were going to partner with somebody, what would you want from that partnership? What would it look like? Both at the school level and at the board level? We, I'd be interested in hearing off the top of your head.
Did you say you weren't allowed?
I'm not allowed to ask y'all, sorry. You can tell me later. All right.
What would it look like?
What, what would you want out of a partner? Yeah. Or what would a good partnership look like? Yeah.
I would want someone who knows the community.
Yep, please, be honest, yeah.
That's what, my first gut is, I want somebody who knows the community, knows the challenges and the blessings, the gifts. That's what I, that's who I would want to be part of the partnership.
Okay.
I would like to see that whoever would come in would take everyone that's in the building. So be able to plan with all 1,800 of our kids, all of our staff, all of our administrators, as is.
And what would you want from that partner in that? You know, what's that mean to take everybody? What do you, what do you want in terms of that relationship?
So instead of bringing in new staff, let's say, or new administration and creating turmoil for our kids or moving half the kids out, if a partner would come in and actually work with the staff that's there, bring in, I guess, a fresh new look at things, new strategies, new ideas, but keep the consistency for the kids the same, being the administration staff and the kids as a whole group. But bring in new ideas, new specialist consultants, whatever they can bring with new ideas, but not throw everything out.
Okay. What else?
I agree with what she said. Is there enough change as it is? And to bring new ones and to retrain them and give them use to the children that we have there already? Where the student already know the staff that are there already? Why change that when you can train the staff that are there? And we can move ahead with them?
I'm sorry, I walked in after 50 minutes of this presentation. It's already gone by, but, so I don't have a context for the question.
That might be, that might be helpful.
Well, I'm Willa Powell. I'm one of the board members of the school board. Served for, it's my fourth elective term. So been around the block a few times. So the context of my reaction is historical. We've, we've responded to schools in need of improvement. We've responded to the state ad telling us that we needed to do something and do something fast, which has meant in our secondary schools, it's meant taking large high schools and breaking them up into small schools, only to watch them immediately go on to the focus or schools in need of improvement lists. And three years later, in the exact same place. So I, I don't see a future for a transformation model that weeds out teachers, weeds out students and relocates them to other schools only so they can fail. I think the only way our district is going to stop a district in need of improvement is for us to take the kids where they are and take the teachers where they are and not shift the burden. If there are failing students and failing teachers, it is, it's not helpful to shift that burden to some other part of the institution. It doesn't change us from a district in need of improvement to a district on the path to success.
Yeah. So I'm going to, I, I want to respond to that real briefly. And then I, I do want to ask a couple of other folks about what they mean by a partner. Look, there is nothing in our proposal that says that we think that we should change the demographic composition of East. It is a school that is not the same size as the other high schools in the, in the city. Those average about 700. East is at 1,800 and projected to go to 1,600. That's not, the failure is not the fault of the kids. I would argue it's not the fault of the staff. It's, but, but fixing it. You know, there's no need to put blame anywhere. You know, I, I, not with, my mother, by the way, was board president the whole time I was growing up. So bless all of you people right now, because I, I know where you sit and that you represent the community. But, but look, at a, at a, at a basic level, initially, making East the same demographic composition, but a little bit smaller so that it's manageable and there's an opportunity for the staff to build culture that's sustainable and effective, that it's equitable, that some of these kids get opportunities elsewhere. And also, I guess, to the point around the staff is, and the kids, is look, turning things around is a very specific kind of process. It's not for everybody. I'm not going to sit up here and lie and say it's a pretty process. It's messy. And my feeling about staff is that everybody should get to have that conversation of whether this is something that he or she wants to do. Families should have that opportunity as well. Is this a, a place that I want to be at as they go through this transformation of turnaround? Because it is not easy. It just can't be. If it were easy, y'all would have done it a long time ago, along with everybody else who's got the same challenges that you're facing across this country. I, I know that's not what everybody in this room wants to hear. You know, that is what I have to say about it, unfortunately. Because I, it, look, this has got to be about making change happen for the kids you have there. And we think one of the best shots is to right-size the school with respect to the rest of the district, but not, we're not talking about changing the demographics. The representation should be absolutely the same. And I do want to talk a little bit about what we mean by partnership, because I think these are the kinds of conversations that partners have. They have to know the community. They have to be willing to hear what the history has been. They have to know what's in people's hearts about what's important, because otherwise, the outsider is coming in and just talking books. It's why I wanted to start this by asking the question. I want you to know a little bit about what our role is in any partnership. Maybe see that movie, Norma Rae, Sally Fields, who's seen that movie? You know, where she's the, the union, the, she, she becomes the union rep at the paper mill, right? And you got the organizer who comes in from New York in his, you know, with his wacky music and hair and nobody will talk to him. He stands outside the factory because he's the outsider. Sally Fields is the one who gets up on the table, you know, with the sign and the famous scene. Sally Fields is the organizer. But he's the catalyst who gives her some of what she needs to make that happen. She's the change agent. He can't do it. He knows it. But she couldn't do it without him either. He provided some of the structures, some of the know-how, some of the resources. So you know what? That's who we are. We're that catalyst. We're not the change agents. I guarantee you, the change agents for East High School are already here in Rochester. They know this community. We don't promote dependency. That's why we don't offer a program. There's no drop-in program. You have good programs. I agree. John came back and said, this school has great programs. There are great opportunities for kids. We're not going to drop in something else. We're going to provide some strategies for how you tackle those programs so that you get more kids coming out of them successfully. And then the last thing here in our role is making sure that, that the change is owned locally. I can't say it enough. At the end of today, I am going to the Rochester Airport and I am getting on a plane. I am. I'm not going to pretend otherwise. It makes me crazy when people do that whole go native thing. I'm, I'm leaving. John's spending the night. But then he's going back to Albany tomorrow. Look, at the end of the day, the outsider always goes home. Another favorite movie of mine is Shane, but I won't go into that right now. I know, you're looking at me like my movie choices are crazy.
I'm a movie buff.
Okay.
Who's in Shane?
Shane.
Shane.
Shane, oh, the cop was Shane.
Yeah.
Shane.
Now you're going. Thank you. Thank you, Willis. Anyway.
I saw it black and white.
Y'all think, I think it's only in black or white. At the end of the day, the hired gun leaves town, right? But, but, but you got to have the change stay local or it goes away. So what do we offer? We offer 14-year track record. That's before all the rest of these folks came out. It truly is. If you look back at the initial literature around this concept of turnaround, it came out of UVA and Public Impact, did all of that. And we're, we're really the only ones in those first few reports. Because nobody else was dumb enough to tackle this work at the time. We're a not-for-profit. We don't get rich. We're not a CMO. We're not interested in taking over. We're only interested in partnering. We don't want to remove East from local engagement. We don't believe in that. It has to be a partnership with the district, with the school board, with the community. Because it's the only way it survives when we leave. We have a staff that is credible, that's accessible and that's helpful. Otherwise, you wouldn't have gotten a proposal from us. Y'all had a short turnaround in the time and you had a lot of people to manage. I am going to say, we, we kept pace with you. And the reason we did that is we know that the most important use of time is not about all of this stuff that you all are doing and that we're doing, but the change that comes for East. That's where the staff comes in though. These folks have all been in turnaround situations themselves before and been successful. And the last thing is, is that we have a commitment to stay when the going gets tough. And we have 50 years at the Institute of doing that. That's why the Wall Street Journal calls us the fake tank of muddy boots. It's because when things get muddy, we put on our boots and we stay. We're not riding out of town leaving you if you choose us to be your educational partner organization. What are we looking for in you? We're looking with a part, we're looking for a partnership. If you all said to us, hey, we'll just hand over East to you, you all go and fix it, we would say no. Categorically, we're not interested. If you said, you take East and we'll do everything you say, we would say no to that too. We're not interested in that. We're a learning organization. I had a, I had a, I had a superintendent call me up just a few years ago, mad at me. He said, look, I was talking to this other superintendent who you're working with and I heard that he got X, Y and Z from you and we didn't get that. And I said, look, his district has got all of these new immigrants who've come in. They've got 83 different languages in the district. He's an old guy, been around for 40 years in the business. You're 27. Your district is entirely African-American. Yeah, you know, your district is half the size. Why would you want the same thing that he got? Why would you want the exact same thing? So we're not going to give you the same thing. And we don't want people here to treat us like we have the same old thing. We want a sense of urgency. We want a sense of urgency. We're already seeing, hearing that in this room. We've certainly seen it in the responses and the interaction we've had with the committee, which we appreciate transparency. We're really glad that this was open to the public. I, I have to say, I'm not entirely thrilled about, you know, the media. I, I would have worn a nicer suit if I knew I was going to be on TV.
I set the standard. It's really wrong.
Hey, you could come do some work with us, Willa, yeah. We want to make sure that we compress time. One of the things that, sorry, I was talking to my board chair yesterday because we would fix a board meeting next week, and I was telling him about coming here today, and he said, "Wait, this is starting in the fall of 2015, right?" And I said, "No." And he said, "Well, that's crazy." You know, because he knows a little bit about this. You need ramp-up time. I said, "Yeah, you really do need ramp-up time." Unfortunately, there isn't. And that's not because of the state. It's not because of anybody's rule. It's because you've got kids at East right now. And we want a willingness to work together. Now, I've got four siblings. One of my sisters, you know, I only recently started talking to after six months and not talking to her because she may be so mad about something. I know what it's like to have knock-down dragouts. As long as you're committed to coming out the other side with one common purpose, I'm okay with that. What else do I have to say here, John? Oh, there's a, you know, there's a lot of research out there. If you want us to send it to you, we will. I think some of the best stuff, even though I have to, I have to say, we share the same researcher with them, is out-of-mass insight around new partnerships. This is the cutting edge of where I think we ought to go in education, where we're looking at turning around schools that are, that are struggling, that are failing. Just not hand them over and not shut them down. Have, have an educational partner who can help you figure it out. Everybody needs a hand. That's what we're extending to you. You don't take it, that's absolutely fine. This has to be a good fit for you. But we wanted you to know a little bit about what we offer in a partnership, what we're looking for, and what we hope that, that, that happens for the kids at East regardless of what route you go. That's what we have to say, because we want to make sure we leave some time. We're a little, we came in a little ahead of schedule on our, on our time, because we want to make sure that we have time to answer questions. This wasn't a full rollout, because we know all the bread, that proposal, that was quite long. We know that you have a chance to answer, ask a bunch of questions, and we gave those. This was really, we wanted you to get to know us a little better. And now we'll take any questions that you have. That's the next point of order, sir.
First order of business, another colleague of ours. Hi, Willie Gavins, from the board. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for providing responses, providing responses to the question. The other thing I should mention, just from a scheduling point of view, like you, we've all been dealing with this truck in the timeframe, and when we had our meeting, I think it was nice, we, these members didn't even know what the next meeting date was going to be, so we saw Willie came in, decided, Willa was, with her, taking her son to Little League, these folks were sort of caught up in our, but again, they showed, we appreciate it. So, any questions?
Just, just overall, I need to test a little bit on the, on the community piece. How, how, in other places would you have been, not necessarily been in Hawaii, but offered to do a site visit there? President signed off on a travel for the budgetary.
You're not actually the first person who's offered to do a site visit there, you know.
I want to be the person who said no.
But can you just comment maybe on, on how you go about engaging the larger community? And actually, the East High School neighborhood has some very strong community folks, it has some purpose within the schools that are good, but there's also a strong neighborhood organization. My colleagues are often very, very coffee. And in the, the Wentworth Neighborhood Association, they're very involved in the school. How, how do you go about, you did mention this, but kind of coming from out of town, you're not saying, hey, I'm not, I'm not community here, but how, how do you go about establishing that, being that you are on the outside, so that maybe you will have people saying, "Oh, they're bringing in somebody from the outside." How do you submit those questions?
So, you know, and John talked about this a little bit before, and I'll, I'll let him step in here in a second as well, but I, I think the first thing is, is that you have to be willing to listen. You have to ask the questions and you have to listen to the answers even when you don't like them. And you can't make all the decisions in advance. That's why to a number of your questions, we said, "We just don't know enough. We can't know enough." And it's not because we haven't done our homework. We've done it as best we can, but we don't know people, we don't know the community well enough. We know enough to know that we can come in and offer something, but we'd have to sit down with folks. The other thing is, is that there are really clear strategies that help a school turn around, but how you implement those strategies and what they look like are going to be very different from Hawaii to Seattle to St. Louis to Youngstown to Birmingham to Rochester. So I think that, that, at a basic level, there's that. I think the second point is that, is that you have a lot of folks who are doing a lot of good things at East, and I think there needs to be, my guess is, that what needs to happen is a forum and a manner for getting them all aligned, so that everybody's working together. Everybody's got the same goal, but they're, and they're getting along well, but how do you align that towards this common goal of these things that John laid out earlier of 100% Regents diploma, 100% higher ed acceptance? And so I think that's what it is. It's build the relationships, invest the time in doing that, allow those stakeholders to be decision-makers alongside you, and make sure that everybody's aligned towards that common goal. John?
And, and you have to go to where the people are. You, you have to figure out how do we increase the access for the conversation? So, so it can't just take place in, in a forum where people come to you? You got to, you got to go into the community as well.
Yeah, my other question for President is, if you, if you answered the question about the, kind of like about the right-size, you mentioned that these high schools, obviously that's huge, President, you might want to just be, it's not, we have not been talking about East for a very, very long time, so we've just always been, I already have it for a long time, in the size of East. And you talked about right-size, I'm getting into the mechanics of how you can go about learning, but what, how, how, how do you, how do you, how do you do that, being that you have such a short, truncated, short frункаtion of time? You do have many high schools, but a lot of them may already be in their planning stages for next year. Ironically, we're sitting in this room in about another 45 minutes, we're going to be talking about budgets, so a lot of the school's budgets are, are going to be set for this year. How, how does that work in your experience of taking a larger school, maybe trying, trying to shrink it down so that way it can be successful? But here at East, it's a very large school, doesn't mean that it can't succeed in that sense, but it is, it is large. How does that work? How does that dispersing of students work in a nutshell? And then what did that do in your experience? If you had the experience of impacting the other schools that, that, that may be affected by that shrinking?
Yeah, do you want to take that? You want me to?
Well, I, I want to start. That work cannot be done in isolation by the outsider coming in as a catalyst. That has to be a collaborative conversation, a collaborative plan around how to make access to the new East equitable for everybody, so that it's fair, so that the demographic configuration...